It's six thirty. This is a regular scheduled meeting of the Girdon School District Board of Directors. We'll now call the meeting in order. We have a one personnel issue, so we will now enter into executive session. All right, now we will return out of the executive session and we'll now call the meeting back into order. First order of business, can this Madam Secretary, can you establish that we have a form? Okay, we have a call form. And the, we want to make an adjustment to the agenda and move Jason's business up map where he can go back to Little Rock. And Jason, you want to present that to us? Okay, I'm gonna do that first. Hold on, Jason. Yeah, Kathy, can you leave us some prayer?
Dear my Father, well, we just thank you for today. God, we just thank you for bringing us here tonight. God, we just ask that you help us preside over this meeting. And God, we just ask for your wisdom as we make decisions for our school. And God, we just pray for all of our staff and our faculty and our students as they prepare to come back on our campus in August. We ask all these things in your most heavenly name. Amen.
Please stay with me for the page. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America.
See if everybody got a blue folder that I handed out. If you didn't, let me know. Most of this information, I believe, is included in your packet that you received prior to, so hopefully you've had a minute to go over. But I wanted to take some time just to kind of tell you what took place. I guess first, congratulations. We haven't been together completely since the elections, so congratulations on the election results. What you have in your blue folder, though, is three items. I've included for you an overview of the bond sale and how the money will actually flow to the district. The bond resolution, which is the action item for your consideration tonight, and then an updated financial analysis reflects the new debt issuance, as well as twenty twenty-two numbers in terms of your assessment, and also wanted you to have that as well. Personally, though, let me say, if you'll look at this memo that I sent to Dr. Vaughn, this memo basically outlines the overview of the bond sales. So as you know, in our system of law, we're required to competitively bid your funds out to different investment banks to get an interest rate bid. What page two of that memo shows you is the actual bid results. So on June twenty-eighth at ten a.m., we received those bids and we received bids from four companies. The lowest bid coming from Cardi and Company to do a bond issue that would go out for a thirty-five-year repayment term like we talked about initially. That low bid is at a four twenty-two. So what this is really good at showing you is that this is actually a market rate. So instead of going to one bank or two banks, you're seeing, we, we sent this out across the United States to all the investment companies that would be interested in this type of bond issue. And these are the four bidders that bid on your bonds. And so you're at a four twenty-two, the cover bidder, the second bid there is from Baird, which is a Milwaukee-based company at a four point two five percent. So right there, in terms of kind of, if you wanted to understand what market rate is, it's kind of showed you where you are. So the lowest bid coming from Cardi and Company, which is a Memphis-based company, at a four twenty-two. The next page shows you the proceeds sheet. This shows you how the funds would actually, the sources and uses of funds. So you borrowed eight million sixty-five thousand dollars. There is a re-offering premium that is a, basically, that premium is how the, the underwriter or Cardi proposed to structure this particular bond issue. Meaning that they're giving you a bit more because they're pricing those bonds in a way in which they're doing it at a premium. So anybody that wanted to buy these bonds, investors are actually going to pay more than a dollar for them, and that's how they structured it. That money comes to you, though, it becomes part of the bond offering. So all in all, you have eight million ninety-three thousand dollars available in sources of funds. And then you can see the distribution of those funds. So the cost to refund or pay off the twenty twenty bonds is three million three. The underwriters discounts, that's the fee that Cardi and Company took is a hundred and sixty-one thousand. All the other costs of issuance totaled to sixty-two thousand six oh seven. And then the prepaid trustees and escrow agent fees is at two thousand eight hundred and fifty-one dollars. When that is taken out, you have a net remaining of construction funds of approximately four million five hundred and thirty thousand dollars. If you remember when we set this up, we set it up so you would receive four million five hundred thousand. And the reason you got a little bit more has to do in part with the premium that was received and the costs that weren't, didn't come in as much as we had estimated them to be. So all in all, you have about thirty thousand dollars more in terms of what you'll have available for construction dollars. Let me stop there for a second and see if there are any questions about the sources and uses of funds. If not, the next page, it showed you the actual, and I know it's small print, but it shows you the annual payments that you'll have by fiscal year. You can see it a little bit better on the next page, which actually combines both the taxable bonds that you did in twenty nineteen for the field and then this particular bond issue for twenty twenty-three. We structured these bonds, as you'll see, we, we did what we refer to as wrapped around your current payment. So you'll see your payment's a little bit lower in those early years, and then it goes back up towards the middle. The reason for doing that was so you would have level payments going forward at that four hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars. In that financial analysis that I provided to you shows, when you take into account this particular payment, how much surplus debt service revenue that you will have available coming back to you, which is around the seven hundred thousand dollar marker, which is what we had talked about previously. And that can be seen on page eight of this document. So again, about seven hundred and thirty thousand dollars a year will be coming back to you in terms of this particular revenue. So that, that's the overview of the bond sale, the numbers themselves. Any questions about that before we move into the bond resolution? This is the item for the, the action item for tonight is the bond resolution authorizing the issuance and delivery of bonds. By adopting this resolution tonight, you're accepting the low bid from Cardi and Co. of four point two two percent, as well as agreeing to certain tax requirements under federal law as well as state law. I want to take you in and walk you through what those requirements are at a high level. I know you've probably taken a moment to read through this already, but just wanted to point out a few things to you. In the middle of this document, the reason it's so long is an example of an actual bond that will be, and I've got the original copies with me tonight, but that will be sent off and will be held by the trustee on your behalf and on the, on the investor's behalf. If you'll flip over to me, though, to page four, I wanted to just point out one thing to you. On page four, section eight, withdraw from the bond fund. This is not a new requirement, but for those that haven't been on the board for a while, you may not remember this, is that the, the district actually makes its bond payment fifteen days prior to when it's due. And the reason for that is, if you guys were to get into fiscal trouble, the state could actually step in and intercept funds away from you and make that payment on your behalf. Investors love that, and it translates into a better interest rate for you. Every state or every district in the state does this, where they make their payment early. But just so you're aware, by adopting the resolution tonight, you are agreeing to make that payment fifteen days prior to when it's due. But as I said, it is business as usual in terms of what your financing has been in the past. I'm going to skip forward and I'm going to jump over to page, sorry, page twenty. Section eighteen. I just want to remind you too about private business use. So by agreeing and adopting the resolution, you're attesting to the fact that you will not have drop, private business activity within your school district. And what does that mean? The easiest example, as we've talked about in the past, would be higher ed, where like if you were to go over to Henderson and you see they have a Starbucks in there. But if down the road, if the school district decided, well, the newest thing is we're going to have McDonald's do our restaurant, have a restaurant in our facility, because now they've decided to get into the school business, but that's a private entity, there could be some tax issues associated with that. We're not saying you can't do it, but, but adopting this resolution, you're saying that you will have limited private business use. So we would have to unwind some of these tax provisions that are associated with it. So what I tell your administration is, if there's anything that comes up like that, let's talk and we can work through those issues. Really, what it would matter to for you guys more probably in the near term is if you had a facility that was still had tax exempt financing associated with it that was outstanding, and you wanted to sell that facility, that might not be able to just be able to turn around and sell it. You may have to unwind the tax provisions around that as well, which requires getting some attorneys involved. I'm not saying you can't do it, but just it's a few extra steps associated with that. So again, if you're thinking about selling your facilities or having any kind of private business activities in your facilities, we just need to have an conversation about that. And then lastly, we just wanted to point out to you at the bottom of that page, section twenty-two is continuing disclosure. The sort of our services free of charge, we provide the district continuing disclosure report that the district is required to do and, and report to investors annually. It basically lays out the financial condition of the district every year, so investors can know whether they still want to stay invested in with their particular bonds. By adopting this resolution tonight, you're agreeing to continually disclose certain information to investors. And again, we'll do that. We take care of that on your behalf. And Rhonda's had the privilege of working with us on these reports over the years. But again, if something were to happen to us, you're still legally required to provide that information to investors going forward for the next thirty-five years. So unless something changes. So again, just wanted to hit the highlights of a few things on the resolution, but happy to answer any questions you have about any other particulars or anything else you might have about the resolution.
Do you have any questions?
Then if there's no other questions, then I would prefer to you for an action.
I'm going to adopt the resolution.
Okay, we have motion. We have motion and a second. All in favor of that motion, say aye. All in dissent, same side. That motion passed.
Now I've got about ten to fifteen minutes worth of papers, so whenever you want to do that, we can do that.
Yeah, you want to take a break and sign these papers and then we'll let him go.
This here's the actual bid thing, so this is what we received from Cardi and Company of them of this, basically how the bid was structured, so what you're going to do. Dave signing this. Besides this.
I just hope you're not on the hook, though.
Thursday, so I can put those.
Got changes. I want to make that three loggers on this.
So on behalf of Stevens, thank you again for allowing us to address that issue and hopefully found the process to be smooth and nameless, it can be very millage. But we, we really appreciate continuing to represent you. Just thank you for all that you do.
Yeah, thank you guys.
President, I asked that we move forward past special recognition so those people get heard. And I make the motion, we accept the personnel package presented to us tonight.
I have to make a second for the personnel package.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. All in favor of that motion, say aye. All in dissent, same side. That motion passed.
Anybody got any question about the July six minutes I wasn't here for? I have no question about the June twenty. For those that were here, y'all got any question about the July six minutes? Hey, man, I make motion, we approve your minutes of Ju- June twenty twenty-three and July sixth, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Here we have a motion and a second to that. All in favor of that motion, say aye. All in the same, same side. That motion passed.
Financials. I just, I just got a question. I'm, I'm just looking at the financials and when I look at the financials and I look at the sheet that's in, something jumps out at me that I just cannot follow. And I encourage a couple of times, maybe just something I'm missing in the financial I've seen and being in the sheet, this, this date I'm on here, I'm in the financials. Let's just take an example. It ain't gonna take long, for maybe some I'm just missing. Because I look here, and I see this wonderful sheet here. You know, everything is set out beginning, set out beginning. But when I look at, at the actual numbers, and I, if you don't mind, go to page, you go to page four. And then I'm just, maybe I'm missing something. Because I'll see a beginning balance here. I see now, but it don't, it don't jive with this sheet right here.
About the transportation expenditure.
No, I'm looking at, I just picked out one that was, jumped out, let's look at football. We say the beginning balance twenty-two. But then I look here, it tells me something different. So maybe I'm missing something.
Um.
Can I see the other places as well? Something like, when I look here, beginning bouncing on it, something is different. So I'm just, maybe I'm missing something financially. I look at our beginning page, though, but then I look at the page they pull out. They present with the number, you know, you got actions. Am I missing something?
Part of this. Is football the only one?
Nope.
Tell me another one.
Look at the one right below it.
One's the one right below.
Basketball.
Men's basketball. Men's basketball has to do, but I don't understand the the football one, I might have to go back, I might have to really look into it. The men's basketball, they were budgeted five thousand dollars. And if you, if you remember in the past, usually these are in the negative because this, the one on, the, the one on the page four.
Because see, I understand, best, being basketball and female basketball, they flip flop every year.
Right, but.
So one's get five, one gets six, and change each with the years.
Okay, men's basketball has a five thousand dollar budget, but they didn't spend their entire five thousand dollars. So when you're looking at this available balance, it has twenty-five oh six. That includes the five thousand dollars that was budgeted, but that's not actual money.
Let me see, why is it different from I be, from what we start with? And I say, I look at, I'm looking at these numbers, I'm trying to figure out, how am I missing numbers? I'm just saying, maybe I'm missing something, because if I'm somebody else looking at this, I've got a question saying, what's happening with the money?
So.
I'm just seeing, it's something missing here.
The football, I'm going, I'm going to go back, I have to go back and look at it. The basketball has to do with the fact that, because this report that you're looking at on statement of changes in fund balance, that's actual money. So the budgeted amount is not included in that, but it is included in this spreadsheet. So since they didn't spend their entire amount, that amount's still showing in the available balance, but it's not showing in the fund balance because that budgeted amount was never.
Go back in ten minutes, one more time.
Okay.
You see, it is not.
If, if you look at the men's basketball, they were budgeted five thousand dollars. They only spent three thousand and sixty-eight dollars. So they still had a balance of two thousand five hundred and six dollars at the end of the year. But they didn't spend all their allotted money. But in the fund balance, and that, that budget will not carry over. So at the end, they're not going to have that two thousand five hundred and six dollars. They're going to start back over with about five hundred and sixty-five, seventy-five dollars.
Is that.
But in the fund balance is not taken into consideration that budget amount. It's strictly taken into consideration the amount we transferred in to cover their expenses and the amount that they, they spent is deducted out and then the amount of any money they took in. The fund balance strictly shows the money that went in and went out. It does not take into consideration the amount that y'all allowed them to spend. This spreadsheet does take that into consideration.
There's that's a difference between like a accrual and a ca- in cash, you know, one is a an accrual accounting.
Well, this one show, this one shows, this one shows how much, at the beginning of the year, it shows how much they were allowed to spend. They can, they have a beginning balance, they have an amount budgeted, and then they can raise money. So this one right here shows, always at the end of the month, shows this is how much money you have left to spend. But that takes into consideration the amount that's budgeted, that's not actual money going into their account. That money does not actually go into their account until the end of the year, and we do a transfer at the end of the year for those expenses.
See, because I'm, I'm jumping up here again. But I see that in football, that the budgeted amount shows up on your sheet.
The football, the football is going to be, I've got to go back and, I honestly have to go back and look at football.
I mean, you do, come, you try, but why one does this and the rest of them doesn't? So how are we supposed to understand what we're looking at? It's like, look at, one thing we all know is, we're supposed to get a report that we can understand what we're looking at. When I see these numbers don't match, I'm like, what's going on? But I know we usually just gloss over this and not look at it.
Right. Honestly, Bernard, I've got to go back and really look at football, because there, there looks like something that's because we were doing closeout, we're doing closeout, and there was some stuff moving around. I, this spreadsheet is strictly done by hand, and so I think there's going to, I think there's going to be error in the football. The rest of them really are just strictly because they, they did not either spend all their budget or is probably why you're seeing the majority of the differences.
Okay, I mean, when, when you're reviewing, and it's not just that one, there's some others that shows up, the budgeted amount shows on that sheet as well.
Probably in golf would be one.
I'm just saying, when you review and look at that, it, it just, it just like, why would I just, why show up in one and not show up in all?
Right, like I said, golf is going to be one because they didn't spend all of their money. Tennis is going to be the same way. There's going to be several of those. They did not spend all of their budget amount, so those numbers are going to be different.
Do you have any more questions about the financial? I hear a motion to accept the, the financial.
Requesting to accept the financial report.
I mean, my point to me, I'm just, she made the motion, I'm just saying, I mean, because I'm still at person verification.
You want, do you just want to get further information? Do you want to table this?
Well, I, I ain't got no problem. Accepted it with the oncoming explanation, but I can't move because you have a motion on the floor.
Do you want to withdraw your motion and re, reword your motion?
So I can amend my motion to stay with Rhonda's clarification of our financial packet.
I second it.
Okay, now we have a motion and a second. All in favor of that motion, say aye. All in dissent, same side. That motion passed. That motion passed. Next item of, of, of business is, uh. Yes, yes, we do. Alright, let's switch, switch gears here. We want to. Recognize some important people in our community that's really. Helped our school district.
Yeah, Amanda, we'll take over.
So tonight, we'd like to honor three people that have played an essential role in our community. Their work is individual, is part of the foundation. Has made a big impact for our community. And their willingness to give their time and service is greatly appreciated. So we would like to honor Michelle Fabinho. You'll come up. Kelly Clark. And Chris Jenson. We appreciate you ladies.
Thank you.
Also, we have one more certificate of appreciation to present. This person has been a longtime supporter of Garden Schools and the community. She is recognized for going above and beyond for our students, our staff, our community members. Everyone. We appreciate your commitment to helping us strive towards growth and success in garden. Miss Animit.
But next item of business, we're gonna, for, for time constraints, we're gonna combine these two consider, considered agendas. One, business legal. Finance and the other curriculum instruction.
Can, can we pull out curriculum instruction?
Okay, we can. Well, well, let's, let's back up, let's vote on the considered agenda for the business legal finance. Altogether.
Can, last one. I'm trying to figure out where this is coming in from, it may be, nevermind, that's in handbook, so.
Yeah, that's, that's me too.
Yeah.
Well. I, I made the motion, we are. Approve the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four board director's meeting schedule. The risk management insurance agreement presented. The agreement for school resource officer. Teach recruitment retention plan. And adoption resolution authorizing issues and liver bonds and other matters pertaining to.
Okay, we have a motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor of that motion, say aye. All in dissent, same side. That motion passed.
Okay.
Okay. How do y'all wanna break apart this, the curriculum instruction considered agenda?
I think my, mine is.
I got a little minute still.
Uh, yeah, mine is maybe like really, so can you look at the garden school calendar district for twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four? I think it's on the other page. And. Just for clarification, so Good Friday, I might be looking at the calendar, is listed as April fifth, but I think it really is March twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-four. Okay. Okay. So. We got them Fridays off marked down. So that just. Um, on the inside of the school calendar page, the big school founder, or. Yes, in the big handbook, sorry, page four.
We just, we satisfied your question, Cassie.
Yes.
Is, is there any more questions about? Any of the other topics, A, B, C, or D?
Hmm.
On the, um, on your, the hospital handbook in the virtual academy, I just was trying to.
That's not hammered out yet.
Okay.
That is not hammered out yet. So I put just a, a mention of it in there, but that is not anything because we are still working on paperwork.
Do you know estimated number of kids at all?
That, I can't, I can't.
Okay.
I cannot give you any information.
That's okay.
Man, this is the beast of. It's right there on page, on page eight. Is, is there any way we can change those words that are not fit in appropriate today's language? Change handicap to disability. On page eight. It'll be a fun to, I, I'll let you see later. Yes. Yeah, let me just, I got a little simple, I got a little simple stuff, y'all.
No, that's important stuff, that's today's language. We do.
Or just disabled.
Mm-hmm.
Or with a disability.
Yeah, that part. So it may be exact wording taken from legislation, so if it is, we can't change it, but I'll, I, I can look it up right now.
You can look it up, you know, the. With the legislator, I remember us presenting to him before I left about their wording and they was okay with it, but. If you, I wanna use exact wording like that, it's fine. But it's, I, it's like a.
I, I said it's not in quotes in the handbook, so. I'll look it up. We'll look it up.
I mean, there's, there's just some simple.
Okay.
The other thing is, I'm just gonna jump, you missed it.
Go ahead.
You had an excerpt in there and I was looking at something. I don't know if it, that the whole paragraph we get it not because. Doctor's appointment, you're seeing doctor's appointments must be turned in three days prior to the doctor appointment. And there's some other wording in there, cause ain't no way my son gonna meet that. Because he sick today, I'm gonna try to scare him a doctor for me. They may not see it for a couple of days. There is no way we can get with three.
It means from when they come back to school. Like you come, you've been the doctor, you come back to school on Thursday, you don't have that note in by Monday. Then it's an issue.
See, the word says three days prior to the appointment. That's what the wording says.
Which one are you looking at?
Doctor's appointment, you, you, you don't get with the handbook, you get with the escape service.
Right, and where, where are you looking at?
I'm gonna get there.
Because in my proposed changes here, I don't have anything on that.
Go to the last page. Who's the doctor's appointment must present these dates to the school secretary at least three days in advance. Of the appointment. Now, anything, was there anything else around that?
Okay, I didn't cha- this was already in the handbook. I didn't change anything here. The only thing I changed was what was involved. So if this was here, that's not anything I put in there. That's been in there, that's been in something that y'all approved before.
When I recommend a change. Because how do you give them three days prior to the appointment?
I agree.
On the letter here from the doctor.
I, I agree.
Like I said, that's not anything I did. That was what y'all already had in there, so that wasn't anything.
That's a change unproposed.
Okay, well, that's a change you're proposing, but again, that's nothing I did. So that was already in there.
So three days of the, three days after the appointment.
No, just say three days prior to the appointment on the letter here from the doctor's office.
Yeah, I'm just saying.
I'm just saying, we have appointments out there, I would, I wonder was there anything around that? With any other wording around that? Was there more to it than just this list or that to? Cause I don't have, I don't have a hospital handbook.
Yeah.
So how would I? You better not do.
But is that, is this because of like the student is self-checking themselves out and like they know they have an upcoming appointment?
Again, this is not my policy. The only thing I changed was to add the discipline for checking in and out. This was what was already approved by the board previously.
And that's what's in bold.
Yeah, the bold is what I've, I've looked at. Everything else was what was already in there. I didn't change anything on that.
I, I was just saying that maybe that was in there and like.
And it may have had something, a reaction to COVID, anything like that, because that policy, things were, were different then. But that is not anything that I've, I've added. It wasn't mine. So I can't answer for it because it wasn't mine.
And see, I can't answer my own question because I don't have a.
School handbook.
Handbook, yeah. Well, this, I. Took it directly from the handbook, probably didn't take.
To even evaluate, a review.
I pulled it directly from the handbook, so I mean, I literally.
I'm saying, I was looking.
Anything right for context to, to that paragraph.
Yes, this policy is specifically isolated by itself because it's simply taking in and out. What's listed in the absentees is something separate, as far as the way absences are considered excused or unexcused. That's a separate policy in there.
True.
I can't answer for this one because this is not my policy. This is one that had been approved previous.
Would y'all have a problem? Ahead and.
So it can be changed, that's what I'm saying. It can be changed, not my policy. I don't have dog in the spot on that one.
But I think like, uh, but I think. We were talking about two different things, like this doesn't ha- I think this is about checking in and out and doesn't have anything to do with absentees. Cause if you like read on down and the above situation, students might leave the school campus without the parent actually signing them out. So like. If I knew my kid was a driver and I knew they were going to. For physical or whatever, then I could send that note that says, hey, they have an upcoming appointment three days in advance. Uh, cause I, I knew it was a, a reason for them to check out and I wouldn't have to come to the school to sign them out. I think that's what this is applying to. It doesn't have anything to do with absentee.
Right, but that even then, that. It's kind of unnecessary because you may not know three days in advance you have the doctor's appointment. I, again, I don't know why it's in there. I didn't put it in there, so I don't. I can't answer for that.
I mean, I'm okay.
My concern is that kids are not checking out of school properly. That's what I was dealing with there.
Yeah.
So what should the policy be then? If, if somebody's got an appointment in advance?
To make sure that they present that documentation. When they get back. I don't see any reason that they would have to present documentation from the doctor before they have the actual appointment, just as long as they bring it when they come back.
When they return.
Covered in the absentee policy, so to me. That statement can be taken out period.
So strike the whole thing, okay.
Now, okay.
Yep. Yeah. Okay, I'm fine with that. Are there any more questions or comments?
So just to clarify, cause I know cell phones have been an, an issue and now we're moving, hey, uh, so is it pretty much the same, like I've read this. I get multiple times and I'm sorry, but. Are we kind of in the same, same scenario, like? If they're out of sight, they're not being used?
For seven through twelve, it's going to be the, the high school policy, uh, have them turned off in their bag, in their car. Just not in use. If it's a student who doesn't drive, who doesn't have a backpack, they can check it into the office. So that's the way it's written into there.
Okay. So that's same as middle school?
That's seven, twelve.
Seven, twelve, yeah. Seven, twelve.
I know, you've got kind of an interesting mix of students for your.
I do, um, I, I didn't have, I didn't allow any use of cell phones in my handbook. Or even carrying it, but we're not gonna. If, if it's in their backpack, like turned off and not being used. What we're addressing is the use of cell phones if they're.
So for those kids who maybe come in and have to ride the bus home or have an after-school program, they'll have it in their backpack for. Potential use and they, they'll be fine like that, as long as it's not out and. Being used.
I'm okay with that, but.
Yeah, I mean, is, you know, is that in your policy camp?
It says, students issued school technology, any use of cell phones or personally owned technology, I told without permission is not permitted. Any, if they have unauthorized items, they'll be confiscated for a parent to pick up.
So you're gonna do a sweep?
No, we're not, I'm not gonna.
You're not doing sweeps, okay. As long as it's off and in their backpack.
Yes, but I think I need to check my warning on that, because it doesn't match.
I got, I read your word and said no school technology. I'm staying there really clear. We don't give it till you don't use it.
I think a lot of the kids, and I'm, I may be wrong, but a lot of the kids who were bringing stuff and having to use it for after-school activities were more of the seventh and eighth grade. That's what I was feeling, that it's not so much needed for the fifth and sixth grade group. I don't see why. The kids were needed for fifth and sixth grade. Um, we do have, I. They done it in the past with kids that turn their cell phones to the office. If they needed it for something. I had a student at primary school last year and he would ride the bus home. And he was like in third grade, but no one would be home when he got home.
Right.
His mom felt comfortable with him having his cell.
I, I, I got a situation I'm looking at. So I got, I, I got one you hear. That I tracked them. By their cell phone. So what you suggest, I get my parents to understand, this is what we gonna do every day. Do we turn it into the office when they get to school? Cause I tracked their motion by their cell phone. So what you suggest, I, 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 get over to these parents here.
I'm gonna, I recommend. Added if students need their cell phones for.
This is needed. Cause I need to know where they at.
Right. Well, like, you're gonna need to know where they at if you're not picking them up, if they're like a bus rider or. They're going home with a friend with your permission or something like that, or they have after-school.
So what do I need to make sure they do with their phone when they get to school?
Turn it in thoughts.
I, I can get that over, because when they leave their school, I need to track them.
Okay, so I'm gonna warn it out right now and I'll read it to y'all before we move on.
Sounds good.
Okay, thank you.
And just for. Clarity's purpose on this, we do have some at the high school that have to have their phone on and on them. Because they have a continuous glucose monitor, they have some type of medical partner, so that's, that's a different. So there are some, as you know, you're always gonna have one that says, well, that one, that one's a different story. That's not you. That's, that's something specific, yeah.
We know.
Yes, but everybody knows it's turned off and in their backpack. When seventh, eighth grade, I've already talked to several parents, if they need to check it into the office, but they don't have a backpack. That's not, okay.
Thank you guys.
I know what to do on that. I'm good, man, we just those little bit of stuff.
Can I make a motion that we approve the curriculum instruction consent agenda to include the board policy update, school handbooks, high school and the district handbook?
So.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor of that motion, say aye. All in dissent, same side. That motion passed. Okay, now we're on to the next item of business or construction project update. We have. Mr. Mike McKenzie.
Yeah, I took a burnout today. I don't have, I, I brought. I brought this, I didn't know what I brought it for. I just got informed, I can't use it, so I'm gonna show you some stuff on the. On my phone, you'll be able to see. The, uh. The uh cafeteria will be finished. They're supposed to be delivering the floor tomorrow and putting it in. So hopefully by Friday, the the floor will be, and it'll be finished. The uh walkways, the ten's been ordered, hadn't come in yet, but we'll have the ten back on. It's been painted. The painter's been paid. I think it was a hundred and twenty thousand, something like that for the walkway painting. Parking lots, as you know, we got rain every day. We pump water every day. Uh, we made our first two pours yesterday and today, so we're we're poured. If you haven't seen um, last week before the rain hit, we did the uh light poles for the middle. We got all those uh ready to pour. So um tomorrow, we'll make our third pour. I'm gonna show you, you'll have to look at this and I know y'all know we knocked the fiber optic line all the way out to Little Rock and all the way to Texas. It was missed mark by fifteen feet, so we hit it. Bad thing is, the next day we hit it again. So I I'll be using my liability insurance for that one, I'm sure. But um we finally finished the entrance. I don't know if you can see. Can y'all see that? I'll have a full, I'll have it on on there next time. Um, but this is the entrance. That's all the people out there working. This is when we were.
When you say finished, what do you, what do you mean finished?
We'll have, we're gonna have the parking lot in the middle school. We hope to have it finished next week. If we can get concrete. Our problem is we can't get concrete. They're only giving us like a hundred and twenty yards a day. Cause they're they're pouring these bridges out here on the interstate and so they're limiting us on what we can get. And we we got Horner. And uh, but we should have the middle school parking lot done. This is, I want you to see this too, because this is what we're digging. We were gonna try to go a foot and a half on the parking, on this football field, and these are what we're digging out.
Big stumps.
Big stumps. I mean, big stumps. And um, so when you dig a big stump out, you got a big mud hole of muck. Um, this is something that we finished the first pour this morning. I think this will answer a lot of the handicap. There won't be a handicap because it'll all be it's poured up to the level of the to the uh concrete that was already there, so you don't have to worry about handicap parking. That end corner down there, which I were concerned with, there's a problem because the the uh sewer line runs underneath it. So the sewer line is exposed and it's sticking into the, where the water goes under there, it's blocking water. I broke it, I hit it the other day trying to pull the concrete out of there so we could make it bigger. Um, we got it fixed, but the sewer line is a problem. So we're taking the old swag out of the back, pulling it out because it's too high. I'm not gonna go through all that, but anyway, it's gonna drain once we get everything pulled out of it and and put it down to the right level. The entrance, we put it in Saturday. We've started digging. I don't know if any of you came by today. This is in front of the football field. So we'll, we we should have the the football field parking lot to those gates. We think we'll have them all dug out and filled back in by Friday. We're rolling.
What does it look like on the depth they're having to go? Was it better or?
We were gonna try to do two and a half, two and a half feet, put a foot and a half of gravel in and then, but it's the stumps, there's so many stumps. If you go out there and look when we're digging, it's just stump after stump after stump. And and anytime you pull one, you got one the size of this desk. So then you gotta dig to get it out, but it's about three feet. Probably average. The gas line runs right down through, and we hit the gas line twice the other day too. It wasn't even marked, three inch gas line. So that shut us down for several hours, but the gas line runs right down the middle of that uh parking lot down there in front of the football field. So we're not gonna be able to dig very deep on the right side, if the way we're facing right now. We're hoping that we'll be able to get the football field dug out, put back in, ready for concrete. If we can do that, they can park on it. Because if you, anybody, have y'all driven into the parking lot down here? It's hard as a rock. You can drive in on it after a rain or anything, so worst case scenario, if we don't get all the concrete poured down here before, they'll still be able to park on it. It won't have lines, but it'll, you'll be able to park on it. And then we'll fix anything that's scuffed up down there on the rest of where they're parked. We'll fix it and clean it up too before. Then we plan on jumping on the the big one back here. We've gotta get enough room for the kids to park. And then af- after that, we can take a section of a time out there, but we got ten or twelve trucks running every day and and we're we're rolling over there right now. And I think um when it rains, we'll do the parking lot behind the gym and the auditorium. And that that can, we can do that anytime. We can do that in rain. We just gotta get the big stuff done first. Other than that, that's the roof will come in, as soon as the ten comes in, we'll start putting the roof back on the walkway. I I think it'll take us probably a week to put all that on. That's a lot of ten. So I guess other than that, we hadn't heard anything from the from the gym yet. Nobody's, we still don't know about it. A guy supposed to get, wasn't he supposed to get back to us from the state? To tell us when we could, you know, get bids. So other than that, I wish y'all, if you get a chance, come down there and just turn, you can turn in at the entrance now. Just turn, go in there and make a circle and see what's going on. But I guarantee you, it'll hold up the rest of my lifetime and yours too. This stuff's got a good, it's got a good foundation down there now. Any questions on that? I'll have you a slideshow where you can see the stuff that in progress. Terry had a bunch, but he didn't know how to do it. I had a bunch of stuff and I thought Victor would do it, but I didn't realize he has to. He's gotta do it a little different way too.
Thank you.
Anything, anytime you're on call, if you need anything, if if I need answering questions or Terry just call. He's worn out right now. He had to go home.
Alright, uh.
I know we have another item on it, but I believe we've already covered that item. When we, when we approve the future meeting dates.
Yeah. Okay, and then I guess just for the record, now it's first day of school planned for August fourteenth. And we'll welcome our ideas, hope hopefully they're be smooth as as we've envisioned.
I will be remiss if I didn't. Thank Amanda and Rhonda for being here for this meeting today. I would be remiss. I thank y'all for stepping in.
Yeah, thank you much.
The motion wager.
Okay, we have a motion. Got a motion and a second. All in favor of that motion say aye. All in the same same side, we are darned.